All right, good evening, folks. Everybody hear me okay? Good evening. Uh, thank you for all for coming tonight. Um, and I want to thank, uh, take them out to thank the, uh, Middletown Town Council and the, my, uh, my constituents here on the City Council of Newport, uh, for getting together tonight on such a, uh, important topic and subject that we've been dealing with, uh, for quite some time in our community. Uh, so, uh, before we get this, uh, meeting going, I want to turn it over to, uh, our city clerk, Laura Sisback, for a roll call, please.
David Carlin.
Here.
Lynn Underwood Segley.
Charlie Holder.
Here.
Cy Camps of Oravong.
Here.
Jean Marina Polatano.
Here.
Ellen Pinnock.
Here.
Stephanie Smythe.
Yeah.
There is a quorum present, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, welcome, everybody, and thank you. As Charlie said, it's, uh, this discussion, in my opinion, is long overdue, but, uh, here we are tonight, so, uh, I thank everyone and thank the City Council, City of Newport, for, uh, being open to having this conversation with us as well. We appreciate that sincerely. Um, having said that, Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Council President Paul M. Roderick.
Here.
Vice President Thomas P. Welch III.
Here.
Counselor Peter D. Connerton, Senior. Counselor Christopher M. Logan.
Here.
Counselor Charles R. Roberts.
Here.
Counselor Dennis B. Toronto.
Here.
Counselor Barbara A. Von Villas.
Here.
We have a forum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Wendy. Um, we don't have a flag, but we're gonna do Pledge of Allegiance anyway, so please join us in the pledge room.
The Pledge of Allegiance stands the black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in this law, liberty, and justice.
Thank you.
All right, I just wanna start, uh, with some opening remarks. Um, so while I understand that there have been many discussions in the past on regionalization between our two communities, I feel it is important that we continue to have these talks due to the ever-changing landscape of our schools and of our students. As an elected council, it is my duty to constantly look for ways, uh, in the best interests of my constituents, on things such as this. In the matter of school regionalization that we are discussing tonight, there are many factors involved that can have an effect on all residents, whether you have students in school or you're just a taxpayer as well. So I'd like to take this moment to address the unfortunate situation we have going on concerning an incident among students at Rogers High School. Uh, the Newport School Committee and not the Newport City Council has jurisdiction on this matter. Uh, and as I'm sure many of you have known, they, uh, there is some outside counsel that is looking into, into this case. Uh, and in respect to them and to the integrity of the investigation, we ask that if anyone wants to ask about the undergoing investigation, that you kindly wait until the information from the investigation is completed, which we hope will be in the near future. Uh, so at this time, as, uh, the Newport City Council, uh, we don't have any comment until, again, all the information is in, so, uh, out of respect to that, we hope you follow along as well. Uh, so now saying that, um, I want to turn it over to, um, Manager Sean Brown to discuss the timeline on, uh, possible regionalization vote.
Uh, thank you. There we go. Thank you. Um, over the past couple of weeks, myself and Colin have been looking at the timeline related to potential regionalization. Originally, I think the discussion was to try to have, uh, a special election in April, and that, that really isn't, um, an opportunity right now, so, um, looking at the timeline, we've laid it out so that, um, if these discussions were to be successful, we would be looking at the ballot being actually on, um, Election Day being November 3rd, 2026. So, uh, I'm gonna start from, from today, but, uh, we're gonna end up on that November 3rd, 2026 date. Uh, the first key date that we're working towards, or we would need to work for, towards, is March 1st. Uh, that's a date that was provided to me by Senator De Palma, and, uh, it's the date that we would need to submit enabing legislation to the General Assembly for approval. Um, there probably is some wiggle room with that date, but logically, it makes sense because the General Assembly would be coming back from their winter break. Uh, so that would be, uh, an important milestone and really sets, uh, a very fast pace for us between today and that March 1st date to have that legislation drafted. I think an important part of that discussion is, uh, if there are, we, we would use the legislation that was, was used the last time as a foundation. If there were gonna be any changes, um, we'd try to identify those as quickly as possible so that those could be, um, thoroughly discussed between the Town and City Councils so that ultimately it, it ends up as a component of that legislation. Uh, and, and again, I think that's part of what you'd be exploring tonight is having that discussion of what areas that you agree upon and where there may be some differences or issues that, that require, uh, additional, uh, conversation. Um, between now and that March deadline, um, probably one of the most significant items which, which should come up tonight is, uh, the Newport Proposal for the Academic Integration Advisory Committee. Uh, that, that resolution was passed some time ago, uh, but, but basically, there's two components to it. One is the appointment of the membership, which would need to occur quickly, and in the resolution, that committee has a 90-day window to establish a, a plan or course of action as well as the resources that are necessary for its work. Uh, so that would basically give them between December, February, February, March, to have that, that first step completed. Uh, from there, they basically have until, I would say, June 15th to, to get a report, um, to the Town Council, City Council, um, so that there could be the discussion that the City of Newport identified should happen before any discussion about regionalization continues forward. So, um, that is on another tight timeline. Uh, that takes us to that, that June timeframe. In July, both the Town Council and City Council, assuming that the legislation gets passed legislative council review, uh, Ride review, and, and General Assembly approval, in July, the Town Council and City Council would be passing resolutions, um, to put the ballot on, the, uh, the question on the ballot. Our Board of Canvassers would be certifying the ballot question, and we would be submitting the question to the Rhode Island Secretary of State no later than August 5th. Um, once that happens, the next big deadline would be September 21st, and that's when the mail ballots would be going out. So, I think from a planning standpoint, you don't have until November 3rd of 2026 to start educating the public about what regionalization's about. Um, you know, really, the election starts in the end of September. So, one of the things that's been discussed is the need for, uh, public education. So the planning for that would take place somewhere, probably towards the springtime, late summer, so those materials could be prepared, um, and you would start to have those discussions over the summer. Uh, we do know from the last round of regionalization, that was very challenging. Um, a number of people here spent a lot of time meeting with people and, uh, trying to provide as much information as possible, but it, it is very difficult to make, you know, our message penetrate, um, to everybody during the summer when, when, you know, tourism's at its peak, people are trying to enjoy the, the good weather, so, um, we'll have to take that into consideration. But, uh, to summarize, March 1st is the first critical date. We have to get the legislation to the General Assembly. August 5th, we need to get the question to the Rhode Island Secretary of State. That means the City Council, Town Council, a pastor, uh, resolution supporting it. The Board of Canvassers has certified it, and then, uh, we really wanna be in full gear, selling the proposal by September 21st when the mail-in ballots go out. I think those are the, the critical dates.
Thank you, Sean. Um, Paul, did you, uh, wanna start off on, on your side with your, some opening remarks? Yeah, I should, but I should have you do that before Sean's, like, uh...
Yeah, no, it's, it's fine, Charlie. It's just, you know, I, like I said, um, at the beginning, I think the conversation, at least discussion, is, is long overdue. Um, you know, we've always been of the mindset, or at least we should be of the mindset, in my opinion, is that you can't have a discussion if you're not at the table, and you have to be at the table whether you agree or disagree on, on issues or ways to get there or not get there. And that's kinda what we're gonna, trying to accomplish tonight, this, with these three, three agenda items, is, you know, what is, you know, what is administrative regionalization? We'll talk about the endowment and, you know, you know, is there an appetite for a path forward, um, uh, between both communities, really? Um, and if there is, then we, then we set another meeting, we start working towards that. And that's, uh, that's really what it's about, and it's, um, you know, I, I personally think there's opportunities for both communities. Um, you know, some things you do well, some things we do well, but at the end of the day, you know, I talk to Jean a lot, and it's about the kids. And, and, you know, that's really where, where, for me, the biggest opportunity is. The, the, the reimbursement piece is gonna speak for itself, and I wanna talk about that. I think it's more, and I think that's kinda where, um, we failed last time, was we didn't, we didn't, we couldn't talk, we didn't have enough answers about the educational piece. What would be the benefits for both communities? And I, I just say that, and I hope I don't offend anybody, 'cause sometimes I'm good at that unintentionally, um, is that it's not the kids, it's, it's, it's us and the parents. That's what stands in the way here. So, but again, you gotta do what's right for, for your community, what you feel is best for your community, given the, given the facts and that are in front of us, or that maybe, maybe come in front of us if we continue this discussion.
Uh, so we'll start off on, on the, uh, the first item. Uh, we're gonna talk about the review of the Newport City Council Resolution Number 2025 dash 146, which discusses administrative regionalization. You know, I, I know that there's, has been a lot of discussion and back and forth on what is regionalization. Uh, some people have the, uh, the opinion that it is, it's either 100% full student utilization or it's nothing, or some people want just the administrative, uh, regionalization, which would call for basically one school committee body, one superintendent, uh, one finance board. Um, you know, there, and there's, there's no right or wrong answer to that, you know, not just whose opinion is what doesn't necessarily mean everyone else is wrong. Uh, a situation like we have tonight and that we've been discussing for, for quite some time is, is getting this dialogue going, you know, getting that conversation going, you know, without digging your heels into the ground and being like, no, if you don't listen to me, then I'm not gonna listen to you, you know? That, that type of, of, uh, communication just does not work. And for our communities, um, and speaking from, uh, obviously Newport's, uh, perspective, you know, it's cha, the, the landscape is changing so fast, and we see it in Newport with, uh, a, a decline in student enrollment, like, quickly. Uh, this is not just a, a, a handful of, of students, we're talking hundreds at a time each year. Um, and it's like that, and it's not just Newport, it's, it's like that in the state as well. Um, you know, so how do we go about fixing, fixing that? I know a couple of years ago when we've had this, uh, the, the original administration, administrative regionalization, you know, we were just in the process of okaying of getting a new high school built. You know, we, now we have the high school built, so now we understand the financial part of it. We also understand what kind of room that we have, uh, for our students and the needs that they have. Um, so how do we go about addressing that? And I think, as Paul said, you know, the most important thing that I don't, that I wanna make sure that doesn't get lost in the conversation is, we want to find out what is the best situation for our students, and I, I mean, all students, not, we're not just talking about the high school. Uh, we have, we have kids in, in the middle school, kids in, in the, uh, in, in Pell School, you know, K through, through, uh, five, that we wanna make sure that we're setting them up to be successful. Now, does that mean everyone's gonna go to a four-year school and graduate and get a degree and move on? Probably not. There are other options as, as well. There are trades to be discussed, there are, there are other, other avenues besides going to four-year schools. Uh, CCRI is working on some great programs for a lot of our, 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 our young kids to, to do things that they might not have thought that they could, um, really, really grasp, you know, a couple of years ago. Um, but to do that, there needs to be a, a, a financial aspect of it, and then there needs to be an, an education aspect of it. We can't do one without the other. They have to, we have to do both, and we have to do them incongruent. Um, so, uh, I know we're talking about administrative regionalization, so that might, in my opinion, I think that is the first step we take. And then I, I would like, at this point, I don't wanna hug the microphone from my, uh, council, so I would like to open it up for any discussion.
So, so Charlie, I guess the question I have is when that's re, administrative regionalization proposed, what does that mean? I think that, 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 that needs to be answered. Is it, you know, where do the kids go? What does it look like in the, not today or tomorrow? What does it look like in the distant future? What does that mean? What, what's that difference between last time and this time, I guess?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilor Carlin.
Appreciate that, uh, Mr. President.
Yeah.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
And, uh, I know that you and Councilor Napolitano have done great work on this with regard to meeting with the Rhode Island Department of Education and well beyond that. There is no definition of administrative regionalization. That's an absolute fact. Uh, the definition of regionalization includes something as expansive as all integrate, or integration of all students, all components of the delivery of education, that is to say, career technical, et cetera, sports activities, et cetera, the requirement for professional staff and others, et cetera. Or it could be as limited as, I think, what we all have been thinking of, but perhaps not explaining well enough, that is to say, a regionalization that includes only an administrative function, a combination of the Newport School Department and the Middletown School Department with respect to one shared superintendent, one shared finance director, and perhaps one other administrative function. That's what we've been talking about, that's what we voted on in 2022, which was rejected. That's what the bill doesn't contain, unfortunately, but allows. So there needs to be, as a first step, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, an explanation to the public, uh, as the President said, what are we proposing? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor.
Um, my understanding and as, um, going back to the 2022, uh, proposal, which is essentially, it's very similar to this one, the process would be to merge two school districts into one district, and it's governed by a regional school committee. Uh, the structure of operations, finance, and educational program would be established by a regional governing school committee. Uh, there's an entire process laid out by Title Six, in Title 16 of, um, Ride's, uh, Regulations. So there are some very specific, um, hurdles that have to be overcome. Um, we have to figure out what regional leadership would look like, uh, how many, um, board, school board members from Middletown, how many from Newport, and then whether or not there would be a fi, different financial board, um, and usually that is the opposite number of the, uh, the school committee. So there's a lot of work that has to be done in that regard, but, um, according to Ride, regionalization can be, it can start off as administrative. I mean, that's always been the way I've looked at it, is, um, that this is just a baby steps to, uh, integrating both schools completely with the students, but, um, but there, there is a very technical, uh, method that, that Ride has set out.
Okay. So... I mean, I just wanna make sure, I mean, we've heard from a couple, I've heard from Dave and Lynn, is that, is that how, is that how the board, the, the City Council feels as a whole? Um, you know, is it, 'cause right now, you built a school, right? We've built, we've built a school, now we're talking about buildings, uh, facilities. Um, so, uh, what I heard, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it would just be, you know, your children go to your schools, our children go to our schools for now, um, one superintendent. I think what you guys had proposed last time was very fair as, of how the, how the district, uh, the regional school board would be set up, and then a regional finance committee with the, with the equity of, of, um, I hate to use the word "power." It's not power, it's equity of fairness of, of positions on those, on those committees. So, um, I, I, I wanna make sure that's what I'm hearing, that's all. Well, that, not just me, everybody.
That's what I'm saying. I can, I can see that that, uh, would be the, the, the way we, we would develop a formula for this combined school committee. Um, there would be, um, at-large election, and the three top vote-getters from Middletown and top from, uh, three from Newport would win the seats, and then the seventh member, seventh member, um, is the one that has, gets the highest vote. So whoever get the hi, if, if Middletown gets a higher vote than Newport, then they'd have the majority on that school committee, and then the finance committee would be the exact opposite.
Right. Yeah. I just, it's just, it's that I think it's fair when it's 3-3, um, you have a lot more voters than we do. So chances are that it would be, the school board would be controlled by Newport probably majority of the time, and that's an assumption, but it could be based on the number of voters, 'cause that's what's gonna...
How many voters do you have?
Well, what, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, so, that setup was, we'll say for the first year, say, say it's 2026, in November, we vote, there's four Newport, uh, school committee members, three Middletown, and then the opposite for finance. The following two years later would be the opposite.
Okay.
So Middletown would have four, Newport would have three on the school.
Or however, however it played out.
Yeah.
But the fir, the first time, it would be...
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, with respect, where, where are we seeing this? That was obviously laid out in the 2022 legislation, but that was certainly not laid out in the resolution that the council passed by a 5 to 2 vote most recently. Uh, with respect, again, I would suggest to us, uh, as a mutual body, or as mutual cooperators...
Sure.
That we're doing, uh, based on the timeline that I'm seeing here, uh, we're doing at least one thing, uh, in the opposite way that we should be doing it. I note that the suggestion is, by the timeline, that the councils on July 1st or around July 1st approve placing the resolution on the ballot. Uh, we should be essentially writing the bills or the bill ourselves, submitting it to Lu, uh, Senator De Palma, uh, and Representative Carson, if they will be the prime sponsors. Again, getting that done early, as the administrator mentioned, though, with respect to Senator De Palma, municipalities can enter legislation up till the last minute of the last day of the legislative session. They have no restrictions on introductory deadlines, so we can do it whenever we need to, as late as we need to, the earlier the better.
Correct.
But we should be voting first on what to put on the ballot, and then go through the process, because if we've gone through the process and wasted the time of the Rhode Island Department of Education, the to-be-appointed members of the academic committee, the voters and residents of the Town of Middletown and City of Newport, by coming to around July 1st and then having a majority of either council say, "No, I'm not voting to put this on the ballot," that would be an embarrassment to both of us, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly why we're, we're having these discussions down, these, these meetings, so we can, you know, get together as opposed to, you know, Newport doing, having our thoughts and putting our resolutions together and having Middletown doing theirs. We can hopefully, or maybe, maybe we don't, but hopefully we come to an agreement on how we're gonna move forward. Um, you know, this is just one step, and then, you know, the next step will be if, say, at the end of tonight, both councils agree like, yeah, we, we like what we're doing, we feel good, we're gonna move forward, and then now we get school, the school committees involved, and then you start working on, you know, more in depth on the educational aspect. So when we get to the point of, this is what we want on the ballot, this is how it's gonna work, we're both in agreement on it, then we move forward that way. As opposed to, like you said, Carlin, which I agree with you, we don't wanna do it backward.
Okay.
But there is a, there, there is a specific, um, uh, formulation of creating this administrative regionalization through Ride. So we have the framework, which was already put in the legislation the last time. So, e, except for tweaking it here and there, uh, I, and, you know, things that perhaps we have to agree on, um, most of that information is already out there, it's what we, we did in 2022. So the, 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 um, the framework hasn't changed. Um, and, you know, I, I think that, uh, the educational piece needs to be looked at, at the, with this advisory committee, um, and to look at the, perhaps, you know, the disadvantages and the advantages of, of having a combined, uh, systems, but, um, the framework from the legislation is the same.
I agree with you. Um, Wendy, do we need to read this in? I think we needed to read this in, right?
Correct.
Right, Charlie, you wanna read, you wanna read yours in first, or number one? I mean, we're talking about it already, but I think we, uh, procedurally, it needs to be read in, um, and received, you know?
Uh, sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Carlin.
Uh, may I move to, uh, please, and I look for a second, uh, skip the motion, uh, skip the reading and move to receive? Can I have a second?
Yep, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All's in favor? Aye.
Okay. Um... No, number two. Okay?
Motion begin, review Newport's Council President, 5 dash 16, creative board.
All in favor? Aye, okay. So, does any other councils have any other questions or comments about, um, administrative, uh, regionalization piece? Uh, Ellen's gonna...
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. President. So, um, you asked a few minutes ago if all of the councils thought that, that definition of regionalization was adequate, and I'm actually on the other side of that, because I feel like regionalization is, um, focused on our learners and their outcomes and putting them first, and then combining them in one location, whether it be Newport or Middletown. Administration, regionalization only, doesn't feel like the complete story to me. And as someone who's spent 20 years working in schools with kids and families, I feel like, um, their voice has been missing for quite a while in this. Um, and I also feel like the regionalization that we're talking about here, administration only, doesn't address a lot of the achievement gaps, um, access to resources, long-term stability, and I feel like if any proposal, um, doesn't center those things, then, you know, me personally and maybe other people feel the same, we need to question its value. Um, and this has to focus on student outcomes and not administration convenience, um, in my opinion, and I feel like there's an obligation, um, to make sure that any shared system doesn't deepen the inequities that we know exist currently, um, in our schools. I don't know much about Middletown, um, but I do know Newport very well, and I'd be a little bit, um, concerned about, like, resource allocation, and I'm sure we'll cover that stuff later on, um, as we move forward. But, you know, I am worried about the very specific outcomes for our students, and I often hear that this is like the first step to full regionalization. Um, but this resolution that was voted on very specifically says that teachers and students will remain in their respective communities for the foreseeable future. Um, so if people are in support of regionalization, I think that the definition needs to be cleared up, and I think people need to walk away with an understanding of whether or not this is the first step, or if this becomes something that makes it so kids are never in the same place at the same time.
Makes sense. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ellen. Dennis?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. So, I wanna thank everyone for coming out. It's really an important topic, and just, I'd like to respond, Ellen, to your, um, statement, 'cause education's very important. I've been, uh, chairing education after-school programs, um, the last seven, eight years, and I believe if we can't give our children a better education, then we're wasting our time. Okay? We are working together currently...
Um, we are working together currently. You know, we have programs that are going on in Newport and Middletown where our students are together. In the school, in our sports, they're all, a lot of them are together. So, and then there's classes that we offer that your students can come here, and then we go to, to your schools to take CTE, base career tech. I'm sure there's some other, maybe advanced courses in some other areas. I don't see that going away. I think we need to do more of that. Whether we vote for this or not, we gotta be getting the education system that works for our students, combining it. But let's say it doesn't pass, we still have to work together and get our children a good education. So if we march to that drum a little bit and realize we still are gonna, call it what you want, regionalize, we need, the state is incenting us to do after-school programs, our ed, our kids are together already, so I think we can overcome that hurdle. I think that, I think as our children get older, and they be our seniors and juniors and so on, we need to be pointing them in the right direction, so they're ready to fly when they graduate, whatever direction they decide to go in. They want to go pursue an education, great. They want to pursue career tech, great. They just want to work in the service industry, great. If they want to go in the military, great. But they all should be aware of what their options are, and we can do that together. Whether they come into Middletown to go to a class, well, we're gonna have to work on transportation, there's no doubt about that. And I think we gotta work on offering different classes at different times. There's something to look at. Hey, I can't take Spanish during the week, there's maybe not enough space. Well, maybe we offer it on the weekend. Maybe they do it virtually. So these are the things that we can talk about on the education, but also I look at education, and I don't know how much time we're gonna have to spend on that, just because we have schools that are functioning right now. What's coming out? I don't know how much is coming out. Let's say nothing comes out, that we're gonna continue doing what we're doing in our schools, then how much more are we gonna add? I think where they're gonna get their chances are to have an opportunity to take different types of education, and we need to transport them there and get them to where they need to be and focus on that education and that the end, end result. So I think we need to do that, whether we regionalize or not. So that's just my thought, and I appreciate what you're saying. I'm hoping they're going back and forth and they're finding ways to work together.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
No, my, my opinion, and this goes with, with Ellen's comment, um, what, what's not, I want to make sure it doesn't get lost, is that it's just the administrative aspect or just the financial aspect that we're talking about. Um, at the end of the day, if we don't regionalize both schools as far as kids, then we're, we are wasting our time. And this is, and that's not what I want to do. I believe myself, and I, I know plenty of the other councils on both sides have a lot of other important matters that we deal with on a daily basis. But we would be doing a complete disservice to everyone in both communities if we don't keep, keep at this and, and keep looking to have these discussions. But, and, and just because, again, as I mentioned earlier, if one of us doesn't get our way doesn't mean this thing should be dead in the water. You know, that we have too much at stake right now. Um, the, the, the point, we do have, as, as Dennis said, you know, we do have a lot of things that the, the, the kids on, on that side that are doing, dealing with, that are together on a lot of things, is great, but it, it's, it's not enough. You know, it, it's not enough. We're, we're dealing with, with also so many different families that, that are struggling to just to make ends meet and struggling to get their kids to school and struggling, you know, kids are, kids in school are, are working second jobs, we're kind of out loud, just, just to help themselves out. And we're not doing enough, in my opinion, we are not doing enough as representatives of, of these people to make their lives better and to give their kids the opportunity to, to be better in, in, in all, all regards. So I'm, I'm in the boat that we need to regionalize, and I know we can't do it from day one, so I think this is, this is our best step forward right now, is to combine our administrative, our administration, uh, forces and, and become better that way. I, I just don't, I don't want to stop this because we, we feel like the students might get left out, because that is, that is not the goal, and shame on us if that does happen, because, um, I know from my perspective, I'm not gonna, I'll, I'll be the first one to tell you, I'm not gonna sit up here and be like, this is, these are the education kind of curriculums that we need. That's not my strong suit, that's not my jurisdiction, and I, I will leave that to the school committee people, this school administration, and all those folks. Um, and, but that's where I want to get to. So, and I, I hope we can all, you know, a, agree to, to go in that direction.
Mr. Chair, I, I just, I think that this two school departments would be stronger together, and I'm worried about our AP classes. I'm worried that we won't have enough kids to even support those classes. I mean, how is it that we would allow us to short-change our kids if they can't take AP classes or, you know, even just regular physics classes? Or it, it just, it seems to me that if we can come together, we're, we're losing so much because we're losing students, and we don't, just don't have the, the, the student population in order to create what they, they need to have. So I see this as being stronger together. I don't, I, and if we have to start out with what you call administrative regionalization, well, so be it. But I look at, uh, Warren and Bristol, um, their students go to their own elementary schools, right? And then they come, and I believe, believe the same, I think their middle schools are, um, separated, and then they come together for high school. So maybe we're a couple of years away from that, but, um, it's, we, we will short-change our kids because we don't have the predictable funding. We don't, we, we just don't. It's just, it's, it's very sad. But, you know, this is, this is a, uh, national trend. People aren't having the same number of children they once did, and, um, and it's just a, a sign of the times that declining enrollment is, uh, is our future. We need the kids.
In theory, I agree with regionalization. I think that, I, I property in New Hampshire, and I think if I went there and said we had 600 kids in two communities next door to each other and we were doing it our own way, they'd laugh me out of the, out of the town hall. It's, it's silly. Um, however, I also feel like I need to say that, because, because we're trying to represent the, not only the students, but the parents and the, and the taxpayers. And I, I know the regionalization things, the ball's gone back and forth a couple of times, but the last time it got voted down, we had to, to revamp, and we're now, I mean, we're building the schools just like you guys, you know, you're ahead of us, right? So we put a ridiculous amount of effort into trying to figure out how many students, like Charlie's talking about, how many kids it's gonna be in five years from now and, and the whole rest of it, and how big to make the building, and how to lay it out, and all those things. And, you know, where everything's going well so far, I, I expect it to continue that way and to, to kind of dump the box out to some degree and, and say that, "Well, we might," and I realize that it's down the road, but to start to think about, "We're gonna send kids this way and send kids that way," when we didn't even get to finish our building yet. I, so I agree with continuing the discussions. This timeline concerns me. I mean, is it possible? I suppose it's possible, but it doesn't sound plausible for us to be able to, I mean, last time I stood there, like many of you, with a sign to try to pass regionalization and all the reasons why, and it seemed, it seemed pressured then, and we didn't do a good enough job of, of explaining all the educational benefits, I get that. I think we definitely need to do that this time. Um, I don't see that, I can't see us doing the best job we can in this timeframe. So am I willing to sit down and continue bringing the school committees and all that? Absolutely. But to try to get it done by November so that we can vote on it, at this point, I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
Who else?
Chris, Charlie.
Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, as well. Um, you know, I, I travel all over the country for work, and, you know, I've been around the country quite a bit, too, and, and I think this, this idea of regionalization is, has been going on all over our country for a long time. And I think sometimes in Rhode Island and New England, we, we tend to, you know, we love our towns, we love our borders, we don't like to do things like this. And, and, but I, I say it all the time, and I've heard it here tonight, the kids are already doing it, because they are. Um, they're, they're all, all doing things together all the time, they all know each other already, it's a common thing. Um, but there are a lot of successes to this, and, and I see, you know, I don't want to go into this telling our voters that we're just doing administration, you know, regionalization. We are regionalizing school districts. That's what we're doing here. And I think that's important for us to start off that way, is to say, we, we're gonna come up with a, a learning plan for all the students in the school district, not just the Middletown kids and the Newport kids. You know, yes, right now we have buildings, it doesn't make sense to bus kids in Middletown all the way over to Rogers High School right now. It just doesn't make sense. But maybe five, 10 years down the line, we, we're building something else, you know, that, that's the benefit of this, that, that RIDE is offering us. But, you know, I, I want to get this out to voters. It, it, it passed pretty, pretty good margin in Middletown, I want to remind people the last time, and it wasn't far off from this. I, I know there's a tight timeline here, but we make some tweaks here, even some of the things, one of the hot topics that I heard was that Middletown wouldn't have control of, of the committee and so forth. If we can agree to split that each, each voting time, what, what's wrong with that? I mean, that solves that problem right there. Um, I just, I, listen, I see it. Our, our school is making some great progress right now, we got a great superintendent, we got great principals, we're making a lot of progress. But I don't see it sustainable in our town. I just don't see the way the populations are going, that this is here, and I think it helps both communities. Um, but I think we need to really go into this to say, "We are regionalizing school districts." I don't, I don't think there has to be this major push to say, "We gotta get all the kids into one high school right away." I don't see the point in that. Um, but they're already gonna be swapping, there's gonna be kids from Middletown going to classes in Newport, Newport kids coming to Middletown. We have great programs. Your guys' school is unbelievable, unbelievable. And I just toured our school, and it's gonna be unbelievable. And we have, uh, your programs that you offer for kids that don't want to go to college, we're gonna have a program where kids can graduate from Middletown or, or the Newport-Middletown Regional School District and, with an LPN, and go out there and get a real job in, in the real world. So I, I for one, I want to get this to the voters again. I don't want to make the decision myself. I think we can tweak this, I think we can add some things, have some discussions, we gotta work at it, and, and I'm willing to work at it, I know there's other people as well. Um, but we owe it to the kids of both communities. I, I, I don't see a downside to this myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Does anybody want? Any comments?
So, so I would just like to follow up on a couple of Charlie's comments. I think, um, I think for the most part he's pretty much spot-on, whether you agree or disagree. Um, you know, our, part of our job is to make sure that we maximize every opportunity for, for every child, every taxpayer. Um, and I, I don't, I don't say that just to say it. I say it because I think we all mean it, and we all want to get there, we may see different ways how to get there, but we need to get there. And, 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 you know, I think one of the things he said was, and it was proposed last time, was that, you know, when you get to that high school level, the, the, the child, doesn't matter what community they come from, that child will follow that program if that, that's what they want, and that's what they need, that, that's what should happen. Um, because if you have these resources that are inaccessible to us, and we have these resources that are inaccessible to your children, what are we doing? I mean, you know, a, and, and again, I was one of those guys back in 2016 or whenever it was, I was one of them, for sure. Um, but you know, as you, as you see things change and, um, you know, and evolve, um, and you start to see the opportunities and you open your mind to those opportunities of what could be. Because, look, our job is to, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know, our job is to, we're not making decisions just today, we're making decisions for 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years down the road. You know, at least get it in the right direction, or get it directionally correct, um, whether it's educationally, whether it's financial, it doesn't matter. That, that's what we do. And so, um, and, you know, one of the words Charlie used, and I use it all the time, it's, it's sustainability. We, we're not gonna be able to survive the way we should be able to survive if we don't work together on something, whether it's this or, or, you know, I've had people in my ears about, uh, memory and understanding, so whatever it is, we need to figure this out, because at the end of the day, it's not about us. It's about the children, and it's about the taxpayer, and it's about sustainability 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years down the road. That, that's what it's about. We keep going in the direction we're going, the new schools we built, you built, and the one we're building, we're gonna be in the same boat if, if we don't put our heads together and work together in, in some way, shape, or form.
Um, I feel your pain, Council Toronto. Uh, I was very disappointed the last time when we didn't really fully explore the regionalization process. Uh, I've been on the council a long time, the number of students has steadily declined in the last five to 10 years. It's the same as true in Middletown. We have needs that we can't meet in Newport. I am convinced of that. If I won the lottery, I think I'd give it to the high school.
I'd want you to consider me, too, Jean.
I may be a little. I just think our kids deserve a quality education, not only my kids or my grandchildren now, but all our kids, no matter where they are in life. And they certainly, um, I, I know having Rogers, the new high school, it is beautiful. It is great, but we've got a lot of work to do there, and we should be able to help them out. And I'm talking from the city's, uh, standpoint, particularly, they don't want to talk about money, just too much money involved. We need to talk about it. We do not have some of the teachers that we need. We don't have some of the proper instruction. We don't have certain services for certain kids. So yes, it is important, and we, this is the first time, I've been on council for 30 years, this is the first time that we have been offered something more than 20% reimbursement on our schools. The schools up in the Providence area were getting 70, 80, sometimes 90%. We were getting 20%, 25%. It wasn't until Joe Eva Gaines pushed with Pell School to get 35% in, and it's very helpful. And I think we should remember, this is something that I'm proud of the people in Newport and the people in Middletown who have voted to build these schools, that's the taxpayers. And they certainly deserve a school that we can be proud of, and the students deserve a school that we can provide all the things that we should be providing. So I, you know, obviously, you know, I'm in favor of regionalization, doesn't mean necessarily all of a sudden all these kids are gonna go to Middletown and all these kids are gonna go to Newport, but that may happen eventually. We will have two relatively new schools, schools that are safe, dry, and warm, and the kids are well-educated and can offer the programming that possibly we can't offer now because of the lack of funding. So I appreciate... So I appreciate the comments. I understand. People think, I, I just can't imagine going through another year of this. If we don't do it, it's, we'll have a nice new high school, but I'm not sure how well the students will survive in it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. Oh, Chris, sorry. Oh, Barbara, all right.
One of the things that concerns me is the fact that if we try to do too much too soon or, or at the same time. One of the problems that we had with the last election, the last time it came forward, was we didn't, we did not give enough information to the parents to have them supported on an academic level. Um, most of you know that I've been and, and a supporter of the, of academic regionalization for, forever, forever. Uh, my personal experience is that I have been an administrator in four different regional schools in three states. And I have scheduled kids in each of those schools as a part of my administrative responsibility. It's not easy. One of the things that concerns me is that if we try to do too much too soon, we will end up screwing it up and we will not have it again. My, my opinion is we ought to do step by step. The first step is, I hate to say this because it's so against the way that I think, but from my perspective, the most important thing right now is the money. I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to say that. I have said it for years and years and years that I'm all about the kids. But in this particular case, I think you need to resolve the money issue. Okay? After you have resolved the money issue and the, which would involve the administration, then I think you need to make extreme efforts to, to address the educational aspects. And I can tell you as a person who has scheduled, scheduled schools, regional schools, ranging high schools from 300 to 3,000. Okay? I have scheduled them. It's not easy. And we're talking about kids in two different schools when we're talking about the high school. There are a lot of things that we can do, but we need to do it right. We can't do it hodgepodge. So from my perspective, I can support the, the financial push at this point, which freaks me out, quite frankly, because I am a, I'm a, a school person, okay? And kids. But we need to resolve that. Once we resolve that and get that off the table, so we're working in a way that, that works for both communities, then we can take the time to do the other piece right. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Von Villas. Okay. You want to move to number two? You want to continue to discuss this?
No, this, I mean, this is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Council Carlin.
Mr. President, with great respect, uh, part of item number one, uh, which is extraordinarily concerning to me, uh, is a discussion on the endowment. Where, where did I see that?
That's, um.
I'm sorry, item number two. Uh, we just explained as best we could and discussed how regionalization would work. Uh, there's another bullet.
Yep.
About an explanation and, and discussion of how the endowment would work. As Charlie earlier alluded to, you don't throw the, the baby out with the bathwater. Nobody can get everything that they want. Uh, in a democracy, this is the way we do things. It's a give and take. Uh, so as a result, I did not vote against Councilor Napolitano's resolution. I didn't get everything I wanted, uh, but I didn't vote against it. However, one of the components of Councilor Napolitano's resolution is that, uh, we resolve as a town council and hopefully with the Middletown Town, Town Council, according to, uh, the councillor's resolution, we resolve to create an endowment, uh, to prioritize and commit, or I'm sorry, we will prioritize and commit the use of state reimbursement funds, um, to the tune presumably of 82.5% for Newport potentially. Uh, we will commit to work with Middletown to create an endowment to improve educational opportunities for all students in the regionalized district. That, that's a great overall goal, no question about it. But the city of Newport went to the taxpayers of Newport and asked for approval of a bond, uh, in December, uh, I'm sorry, November 2022. The taxpayers of the city of Newport approved said bond. Uh, it was for 104.5 million roughly. That was to include about 98 and a half million dollars to build a new Rogers High School and about, uh, 6 million or so. Sooner or later, we're talking about real numbers here, Mr. President. 6 million or so for, uh, the expansion of Pell School. We have committed to date 131 and a half million dollars, uh, which will be on the backs of the taxpayers of the city of Newport. 31.6 million of which, I'm sorry, 31 minus four, 20, about 27 million of which will not be, uh, reimbursable by the Rhode Island Department of Education. So if we are going to get a reimbursed, or if we are going to get an increase, uh, in the reimbursement rate that the state of Rhode Island gives to the city of Newport, our first obligation is to go back and reduce that bond obligation. Our first obligation as a city council is to go back and reduce that bond obligation on the part, uh, of the, the voters, the residents, the taxpayers of the city of Newport. Because we didn't say to them, look, we're asking you for this money in order that we create this, uh, opportunity as pointed out in Council, uh, Council Napolitano's resolution. We said, we're going to build a school and enhance another school with this money. If we get additional reimbursement money, I favor paying off a portion of the bond with that money. We can find other ways to do what Council Napolitano says, but I'd, I'd really like an in-depth, sorry for, uh, talking too long here, uh, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, but I'd really like an in-depth discussion on that endowment issue, please.
Yeah. So thank you for bringing that up, Dave, because that's where we're going to go next. Um, but, um, so I guess the question on the endowment is, I took some notes off of that, uh, resolution. And I have a lot of questions too, because I feel the same way you do. I just, we just need some explanation. I guess, you know, you know, what percentage are we talking about? Explaining the endowment proposal, how it'd be executed, how much? You know, what can and would it be used for? Are the funds restricted? You know, we obviously, we obviously borrowed more money than you did. So what's the equity? Would it be equal? What's the percentage of the percentage, our percentage would be, uh, whatever percentage it is would be, we'd, we'd, we'd be given more if that was the case. And I know that's probably not the case, but those are things we need to talk about. Because, you know, you know, a certain percentage, you know, 10% of or 20% of 190 is a lot more than 10% of 98. So it's that kind of stuff. So Dave, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, again, is it restricted? You know, what would it be used for, tho, those kinds of things? But I guess we probably need to start with, what do you mean by it? I mean, it just so it's defined, so it's on record of, of, so everyone understands what it is and exactly what you're talking about. Or maybe the percentage hasn't been defined yet. I don't, I don't know. Um, I saw some emails flying around that showed a percentage number, a certain percent. And I was like, that's a, that's a deal breaker for me, uh, that certain percent. But that, so that's something that we need to discuss and kind of figure out.
My intentions on the, uh, resolution was some of the reimbursement money would be used toward Newport's endowment fund. There was no specification, no percentage. And I, like you, I've been pummeled by this question. And I really don't believe, you know, the savings basically belongs to the taxpayers. And they have been extremely generous in the last few years in both communities, building a high school. However, we still have needs in the city. We still have things that we have to do even for the school. So it, there was no percentage number whatsoever as far as what we would give to the schools toward an endowment to improve opportunities for the kids. I've always felt like, and I've said it publicly many, many times, that some of the savings certainly should benefit the children, certainly should benefit our students so that they can grow up to survive and thrive.
Yeah.
But there was never a number.
Okay. Well, thank you for clearing that up. I think that, um, Dave, one of the points you brought up was, is spot on, in my opinion anyway, that, you know, we didn't go to the taxpayers and say, hey, we're going to use it for this. We went to the taxpayers and said, hey, if, if you approve this, this is the reimbursement. Now, this is, if you regionalize, my understanding it's 2% per grade additionally. So you could be talking about additional 26%. Potentially, or 24, but if you, 26 if you include pre-K, I believe.
It's interesting.
So, so, you know, part of, part of that is, okay, so what do you do with that? I think you pay your debt down. Um, you know, maybe, maybe we can come to an agreement on if we move forward of, you know, setting up, setting up a fund where, um, maybe transportation savings or something like that would go towards maintenance or education or whatever it is. Um, but I think that's a discussion that we need to, we need to talk about. I don't know if we resolve that today, but at least we need, at least we need to have an understanding of what, exactly what you're, you're proposing and what you're, what you're looking for us to, to accept or agree upon at some point in time.
Do that.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
I'm used to trying to yell too, but, um, as you mentioned, like the transportation, uh, transportation savings, we need to know what that exact number is going to be. You know, so if we, you know, agree to keep, to keep going on, you know, one of the next steps is we bring in, uh, bring in RIDE to, to talk about, okay, what are these numbers that we're, that we're dealing with? So we know, okay, stay, uh, $3 million, just to throw a number out there. Don't quote me on that. That's, that's hypothetical. You know, do we take a half of that, uh, half of that number, 3 million? And split it between the two, uh, between Newport and Middletown and, and do, and put that, and the other half towards education? You know, I, I don't know. We need to see what that number is. If, if the number is a hundred thousand dollars, then, you know, maybe that's not going to be enough to satisfy, uh, an educational opponent, uh, uh, component. And then we have to put it towards, you know, back to the taxpayer. So let's get, um, before we start throwing hypotheticals around like I just did, let's make sure we know what the numbers are that we're talking about so we can make, you know, the right decision.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Is any, uh, go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, I just want to say, as far as the buildings go, the building in Middletown is paid for by the Middletown taxpayers. The building, uh, Rogers is paid for by the Newport taxpayers. And never the two shall meet in terms of paying. It is the administration's job in Middletown to pay for the school. And your reimbursement likewise would come back to the city. The same is true of Newport. And then we can determine, I think we can get lost in the weeds right now because it is a lot of money. But certainly we want to do the right thing for the right reasons. Um, those aren't combined, even if the schools are regionalized. The debt belongs to the town and the debt belongs to the city for our school.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. But, um, if we, if we are reimbursed to 80% versus 52 or 53% in Newport, that's, that's a lot of money that, you know, the taxpayer isn't going to have to put out. And that if we could come up with a, some sort of a funding formula to, um, to make it work and then put it into some, uh, like we have several endowments in Newport. And we have a technology endowment. We have, we have, we have, we have several that, and they make money because they're in the market, you know? So, um, and we've been very lucky to be able to, to, um, support our schools with that money for technology. Um, but if we don't regionalize and we don't get that extra reimbursement, then I, I, I don't see how we could really make our, um, school budget sustainable. And we would not be able to have, um, like a, um, what's the word? Um, it's a, but we can't forecast exactly what it is that we can, that we, that we need to. So I, it's, it's just, it's just such a need and, and nobody wants to talk about the money. I, I understand that, but the money is what hires the teachers, is what takes care of the buildings. It's, you know, and we, we need to use, we need, we need the money. I mean, it's just the way it is. But, um, but I, I can see us, if we, if we get the 80% reimbursement, that we could take some of that and, and put that savings into some sort of endowment that could, that could grow in the market too.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's a great idea and we would certainly, uh, I mean, we would, based on what the stock market has provided the last four years, we would love to see growth. It's prohibited by state law.
What's prohibited by state law?
You cannot, you cannot use state, you cannot use money which the state gives to a municipality to invest in the markets. It, there are very, very specific conditions that the state of Rhode Island, the Rhode Island Department of Education, any other authority allows a municipality to do. Uh, we would have loved to take, when we went to market, uh, a few years ago, we would have loved to take the 106 million dollars and put it in the stock market. It would have been worth double, uh, at this point, but we were prohibited to do so by state law. We could only invest in about four instruments, frankly, US Treasuries, US Bonds, some other bills. If we had our finance director here or if Middletown's finance director was here, either one of them could explain it far better than I can. But the scenario that my colleague describes is all but illegal.
Okay.
Well, I think that we could probably work it out, Mr. Carlin. Um, you know, perhaps not take the, the reimbursement money, but take the money from the general fund. And, uh, I, I'm pretty sure that we're smart enough to work that one out.
Yep. Okay.
More of a general Q and A and for other discussions, but I, I do want to frame what we're actually talking about here, right? Let's start by just acknowledging our school committee members who are here. Thank you for coming out tonight. My colleagues in government, um, I work with governments for a living. I have for almost 20 years. And I will say that the people we work with here on this island are extraordinary, each and every one of you. And even with the high caliber of people that we have serving, I think you see both of our bodies and our respective counterparts in the school committee struggling. And part of the reason why they're struggling is that the level of change that we've experienced here um, has substantially outpaced the structures of governance that we have. And so while we're deep in the weeds talking about individual issues, the big picture item we're deciding here, the exciting part of doing this is we get to talk about building a better governance structure for the future. A better governance structure. That's a really unique thing to get to do in government at any point in time. But it does require that we all agree on what the true north is going to be for this community. If that's going to be education, everything else has to be agreed to be secondary. Even if it can't be taken separately, we need to agree that education is going to be the driving purpose. More importantly than money, more importantly than speed, more importantly than the size of the district. That will be the guiding principle that this governance structure is hopefully set up to pursue. And I don't know that we know what that best governance structure is, but I do know that in a moment we're going to be talking about the need to at least get the best minds at the table to figure that out. And let me put in perspective just how complicated that new governance structure's job is going to be. I'm going to press to the front, the pain point right here is an example. I want you to consider that we're doing tonight is not voting on an overall restructuring of a governance system that will last for the next several decades or more for our communities. But we're making one very simple vote, right? Would you right now, if you knew that you could save money, combine the Rogers and Middletown football, football programs? Maybe not the teams, we don't know yet. But would you combine those programs? Would you each vote tonight to do that? Not being able to tell the parent of a player who the AD is going to be, what the annual budget's going to be, who the coach is going to be, but just to combine the programs? It's a really hard decision. But we're talking about the same type of a decision that a parent who has a gifted child taking AP programs or a music program, a grandparent who has a a child in a multi-language learning program is going to have to be making. And the faith that they need to have is that this new governance structure is going to be better set up than what we have today to make better decisions that help us achieve whatever that true north is. I think that we need help getting that validation, this is going to be a better governance system. I've gotten on board with working with my colleagues in support of this because I believe we can build that, but I think we need to be frank that we have to bring in the community through the Integration Advisory Committee, we'll talk about in a minute. We need to lean into hiring a consultant to at least guide us on that, because if we can't give parents that level of faith that this system and this structure is going to be prepared to meet the moment in the future, I think that, you know, what Thomas Welch has noted earlier is right, that we're going to keep brushing into this and not be ready with all the answers that we need here on the big picture question here of whether or not we're going to be better off. So I'm excited to be doing this work. I'm very thankful, President Rodriguez and Mayor Holder, you've brought us all together to do that, but I do think that we've got to step back and just say, if what we care about is educational outcomes, we need to be ready for everything else to be secondary to that until we can answer that question.
You want to move on to the?
Yes, just any councilors make questions or comments?
No.
Charlie.
All right. So we'll move on now to the Newport, excuse me, the Newport Resolution on the Academic Integration Advisory Committee. I know at our last meeting that we had back in November, there was, we had a lot of discussion on what's going on with this this committee, where, you know, we've had some people.
Charlie, we probably should just read it in first, just to receive it.
Yep. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, move to accept, skip the reading, and.
I like it, Dave.
I asked for a second.
Second.
Motion, second and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We don't, we're not that informal, I don't think, but it's kind of, I kind of like it.
You're doing a way game for us.
I like it. Review, number three, review Newport City Tower Council Resolution Number 2025-43, Economic Integration Advisory Committee. Explanation, discussion, question, answer, another discussion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
All right, so. Where was it? Yeah, so there was a lot of discussion on what's going on with this committee. So in in that time, we've had, we've had a good amount of people apply for the positions, and we are, I have put together a list of names that are just waiting to get some confirmation from the rest of the council on if we want to go forward with those names or keep the application process open. So the the goal is to have a team in place by January 14th, that's all be our first meeting for 2026, and then get the, just to try to get that integration committee going.
Have we decided how many people will be on this committee?
No, there hasn't been, one of the discussions with that we wanted to have tonight with our constituents from here in Middletown is some of your ideas, if if this is something that you want to do on, from your perspective, or is this something that we we here in Newport will will just take the reins on and just use some information? At the end of the day, the information that's gathered from this committee is going to be useful for both parties, for sure.
Okay. I guess just a, just a, I think Cy kind of was getting at it a little bit, but just, you know, an explanation on the academic integration and committee, you know, what's their role? What's their timeframe? Because given the timeframe, I think it was important, that's why Charlie and I had discussed of having Sean lay out the timeframe for everybody. Does this fit into that timeframe? And if it doesn't, how does it? How do we make it fit in the timeframe? Or does it? Are their findings binding? That's a question we need to think about as well, you know. So I think, yeah, so just a brief explanation for the record.
Yeah, I can just answer that real quick. So how we have our our boards and commissions in in Newport, are they, and especially this one, it's an advisory. So it's it's a great tool that we've been using to have, you know, a group of people that can gather information and that can help us, you know, make our decisions. So if, for instance, if if we want to, you know, we get this this committee together, we're going to try to get people from just various backgrounds, you know, we can't have all educators, we can't have all finance people, we can't have, you know, just, you know, we can't have everyone thinking the same exact thing. We have to have, you know, a good committee, a good panel that's going to be able to discuss different things and have different ideas so we can come together, much like we're doing right now. But it would just be, yeah, it wouldn't be any binding resolution that they would have, but it would just be straight, strictly advisory, and we can continue, they can continue meeting as as long as we feel necessary. And I could absolutely see this going, for instance, if this, we do decide to pass regionalization in November, I can see this this advisory committee continuing on, you know, and you can, you know, as people drop off, you add new people in. And but once they get together, then they can decide how many people should be on the on the board. They can decide on a chair, vice chair, and and put their their rules together.
Mr. Chair, is the intent to have a consultant work with this advisory committee? Is this, Cy, is that what you had thought of?
I'm going to defer to the original sponsors.
Yes, to answer, Counselor Sagley, but really quickly, I just wanted to go over some things about this resolution, because I feel like there's been some misinformation floating around that we're demanding something of you all at Middletown, and, you know, that's not the case. So I first want to say that, like, this resolution itself does not enact like a consolidation or a regionalization or any of those things of our two communities. It was created to authorize more of like a formal representative advisory committee, like Chairholder was just saying, to study and propose possible consolidation or integration or none of those things, if that's the findings at the end. And I will say, like, by requiring a resource and proposed action plan and full report by mid 2026, we were really just trying to create a more structured and transparent process with stakeholder input, because, you know, I said earlier, all voices matter when it comes to these conversations, and I think this was a way for us to help advocate for our community to make sure that, first of all, they knew what was going on, and second of all, that they had some autonomy in the conversation. And then what else, the other things I want to say is that, you know, considering like the attempts prior to this conversation that we're having right now, I think this is a more gradual and consultative approach to finding out if we're heading in the right direction, or if we need to pull back or address things. And the resolution, in the end, it doesn't demand anything of you all. It was simply asking you all and kind of framing, like, the involvement that you guys could potentially have when it came to this. It's advisory, it's not directive at all. There's inclusion and not obligation when it comes to this, and it was hopefully inviting the participation of Middletown into this conversation, and it is exploratory, it's not binding.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Smythe.
Just to pivot off of what Counselor Pinnick just said, the, you know, the premise behind this committee is to really engage the stakeholders in not only talking about the whole financial piece that the two communities can benefit from, but the educational piece and to President Rodriguez's, you know, statement earlier, that this helps with the sustainability process so that this committee can help give us an idea of what things will look like five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, as to how the communities can potentially benefit from regionalization. What this committee, you know, will pull together subject matter experts in the field so that we get more of a rounded kind of look as to what exactly we're dealing with and what the potentials are going forward. But it also, it also gives voice of the community to the table so that we can actually see what the community's concerns are, if we're able to regionalize, or, you know, if there's any sort of negative perspectives on what regionalization could mean and a way to address it. So it it really kind of fills that gap from the last time this was presented in 2022 and the lack of, I guess, I don't want to say transparency, but information that was missing the last time that the community really needed to be able to make an educate, an educated decision. So to me, this committee kind of fills that gap, and I think that it would benefit both communities to have representatives from both communities to be able to speak to that. Thank you.
Counselor.
Vice Chair Sagley, thank you for raising that. I just want to give the sponsors a chance first, but I'll I'll say why I did support this in conjunction with a budget article that allocated a quarter million dollars in our budget for a consultant, is that the commission, as I understand, it really has two purposes. The first is to study, the second is to socialize. And the reality of the timeline laid out by Manager Brown, which I think is very realistic, is that this does need to move with some level of definitiveness if this is, in fact, to be something that be considered. And what we're looking at overall is creating a joint governance system. If you consider the potential for that system, the civilness of this conversation this evening and how well this is going, I think the next natural step of that is seeing how another body, a joint body between our communities, could end up working together on this issue, and whether or not they can move and execute with a level of speed and certainty that would ultimately be necessary of a joint school committee to make the type of innovations that we need in education. And so it is a continued progress towards that point, but the consultant is what helps make sure that we stay on task and on time so that there's a definitive outcome for at least our respective bodies to consider.
Okay. So we haven't done anything with this yet as far as appointing anybody. We wanted to have that discussion first, because, Ellen, to your point, at first, it was like, hey, what do they, what do they, what do they want us to do here? You know, we weren't, you know, I hate to use the word blindsided, but it was like, and Cy, you and I had plenty of conversations over the year, last few years about, you know, educational integration and, you know, we need to figure out a way to let the community, educate the community on what the benefits would be or wouldn't be. We have a. Can you talk about a little bit about the Woolpert? We have it here, I don't know if you guys have it or not, the Woolpert Report and what it kind of did. I can speak to it a little bit. Okay. So, so this report, it looked at school districts that, you know, had similar issues like we've we have currently have. I'll just read you one of them, and if we can get this to you guys, if we can get a copy of this, if you don't have it, that'd be great. You know, so, and it talks about different school districts. For example, the Monica, the Monica School District and Center School District both faced the challenges of declining enrollment, similar to us, right? And fewer educational offerings for the students because of that. Because of these challenges, the two school districts moved from rivalry to partnership to find a mutual solution that would benefit their students' learning opportunities. For the students to have access to quality education, the two communities worked together through a steering committee to develop a student-focused plan for integration, and I believe this is what you're you're proposing. The districts focus on how best to use a facilities portfolio for student learning. They manage their tax burdens while providing improved learning experience for students. Additionally, student enrollments stabilized. They found efficiencies in their operations, were able to expand the educational offerings. And Center Valley School District, is what they call it now, I guess, stayed focused on the students' learning experience to size a point of, if that's the direction we're going to go in, we need to make sure, we need to commit. And again, the leaders today won't be the leaders of down the road, but you you need to lead, and lead by example, and set that example from the get-go, and hopefully it can be carried out. I mean, there's no guarantees, right? But you can see from this one small example, and they go on to talk about a bunch of different school districts, and a lot of them are the similar similar cases, but I think, you know, if you look back in hindsight's 2020, right, and you look back and you always want to improve, so how can we improve from a, from what happened last time? Where where can we make a difference? And and this is it. I mean, we can talk about money all day long, I don't want to talk about that. I think I learned my lesson in that. It'll speak for itself, but but what we do need to talk about is is making education a priority, if that's what we're going to do moving forward. And part of that is, I just want to make sure, I'm not sure we'll be able to have, since we have nobody identified yet, to be able to get those people by January 14th, because we're going to have to advertise, we have one more meeting in in December, and then, you know, get advertised then, and we get applications, and we're probably talking about sometime in February, so I don't know at a minimum, I'm not sure, and I'd have to collect, have to check with our master clerk over here, you know, to make sure that the timeframe winds up.
It would be the first meeting in February.
What is it?
It would be the first meeting in February that you'd receive the applications to appoint.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, this this is a a moving body, if you will, you know, this is not, you know, hey, if we're going to come up with our names, that's it, there's going to be no more. This is going to be a a constant revolving board, you know, so.
Well, I get you, Charlie. The only reason I bring up the timeframe is because if the findings come back and it's something maybe we want to put in into the legislation, that's that's important from a time timeframe perspective, that, and maybe it's, maybe there's not, I don't know. They're not binding their advisory, but they come back, you go, hey, man, that's a really good idea. I think we should incorporate this, and if we can agree on something like that, then we do that. I'm not sure if that's the case or not, but there's always potential for that, that we need to keep in our minds.
Just, I I think that's a great point, Paul, and as I'm sure Counselor Carlin will step in and back up, the beauty of the state legislative process is that even if we meet that good faith March 1st or close to deadline, if there are modifications that are needed to that legislation to ensure that this proposed body reflects the best advice of this group and the advisors they have, we could submit a sub A up until the point of just about final passage in those chambers, you know, which is usually at the end of June. So I think it gives us a bit more runway than just that March timeline, although I'll defer to my my esteemed colleague, Counselor Carlin, if I'm wrong on that. All right, there we go.
So I guess I need to ask, what is the, what is the, what is the timeline you're looking for? Is it 60 days? Is it 90 days once this committee gets going for to come back with findings? Or is there no timeframe? There has to be a timeframe, I guess, because, you know, again, some of this stuff could be combining if there, if, you know, the, if those advisory opinions are taken.
We did define it as 90 days, Mr. President. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's not just, and it's just not just that, we have school committees, too, that need to be involved here as well.
Yeah, I think that that 90-day timeline was not only with the timeliness of this conversation in mind, but also, realistically, a typical consulting engagement like this is in that 60 to 90-day window. And so they're very much driven towards putting out a result and a product that can at least be considered by the respective bodies.
Okay. I mean, is it that they would look at, a lot of times, we get answers from from people that have done this already. Maybe that's what they do, I'm not sure what they do. I know they're experts in the fields, and we want different experts from different areas so that, you know, we're being guided the best we can from those different areas, but at the, okay, but at the same time, you know, what is the, what is that expectation? And this is, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. So been thinking about this in regards to the education and what the format is going to look like and what we can offer, but I keep going back to Ride and and what programs we have in place today. What can come out? I don't know what can come out. You know, if we regionalize, and I will get, probably getting ahead of myself a little bit, but Ride will have to be involved right from the start, and our school committees are going to need to be involved, or, and I know they're super busy, they get their heads down, so we've got to be sensitive to their time, but we've got to, but we do have to move fast, right? And and having a consultant, I agree, would help us stay on track, help us get the output in the end, pulling it together, probably. in the end, pulling it together probably. But I don't look at it as a big leap. I think it's, there's a lot there already. I mean, your school is like, I want to agree, is fantastic. When we went through that school, when it opened up, I was ready to go cook a pizza in that kitchen down there. So nice.
I'm going with you. Yeah.
So we just got to get the play, right players in place and then I think it'll, it'll go. And we can, as you said, I agree that it should be a committee that continues on and can work as this moves forward.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Counselor Toronto mentioned the, the school committees being involved in the process. And of course, they have to be. The Newport School Committee voted five to two to approve of the resolution that Counselor Napolitano submitted. It's my understanding that the Middletown School Committee is still unanimously opposed to the resolution. Does that hold muster still? Is that, is that true?
That's still, that's still the case, yes. My, my understanding, yes.
But we, just to add to that, we have talked, we had a meeting with the school and they have their concerns. But they're all in agreement if we can, and I'm not going to speak for them, but I got the feeling that if we can answer their concerns, they were for regionalization, but they have their concern. So that's our job to help answer those concerns. I don't want to speak for them, but I get that feel.
Well, and the, and the hope is after tonight, you know, we can both agree that we want to, you know, continue the conversation. I know tentatively we have a, a date of January 12th in mind of getting back together. And we'd like nothing more to bring in both school committees to jump in on the conversation.
All right. That, that being said, I really appreciate the turnout tonight. No, I'm right in the middle of something.
Thank you, Charlie. And I'm sorry, Paul, I just have to mention this about, because the endowment came up.
Yep.
I just, I want to sort of clarify what this means by a reimbursement. It sounds as if we would get an infusion of cash from the, from the state. That's not the way it would be done. If we were to regional, not regionalize, we would get 50% of the bond paid for by the state. If we were to regionalize, we would get 80% paid for by the state. So we're not getting an infusion of cash. I think what we need to do is look at the delta of those numbers and then decide on a percentage that we could do for an endowment. So I just wanted to make that clear, that it's really a savings plan and not an infusion of cash.
Yeah. I just, you just, I just had a flashback to 2004 to 2008 when I sat on the council with Senator DePalma. That was his favorite word, Lynn, was the delta. He'd get a kick out of interviews here, I'm sure. Okay. Many councils have any questions on the academic rally?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have some questions just on how this works in Middletown, really. So this is a resolution the city of Newport put into place for an academic integration advisor. We, we would have to create that same thing as far as our town goes? Like, do we have to create that committee? Because this specifically, it, it kind of says joint committee, but this, they're appointing people from Newport. Are we just appointing people to this joint committee?
I, I think that's the idea is that you would vote to appoint Middletown residents or members to a joint committee between both communities.
Do we have to do our own resolution to create our, like, involvement in this committee?
I would think you would, yeah.
Okay. And then I noticed at the end of this resolution, which, you know, you guys, this was back in March 12th. So it did say at the very end, it says that the report's findings, which will come out of, you know, there will be a report that will be due, shall be thoroughly reviewed before seeking additional state or municipal action on regionalizations. Was your intent then to, to get the report done before we even put this out to voters?
Yeah. Sorry. Yes. The intent was to get the report in. This was back in March. Like you said, to get the report in before there was any movement forward that way. Like, we've got the study, we have the findings from the consultant and the committee. And then, like, it's something a little bit more robust, like, you know, we're hoping for an actual plan that voters can read and, I mean, yeah, read and digest and understand, like, exactly what's going on. And then have also had an opportunity to be engaged in the process.
And, and times change, right? So now we're, here we are, December. So in, in my eyes, we have two buckets here. We have, I hate to call it administration, but it's, it's like what we talked about, finding out those money answers, like, what are we truly going to get for this? While at the same time doing the academic integration. I think it has to go parallel past here. That's, that's my opinion. I don't know if everyone else feels the same way.
Given the timeframe and it, you know, that can be going on in the background, educate, you know, to, to, to receive those findings right up until, I mean, the sooner the better. But we, one thing, I, I learned two things from the last time. Don't rush, number one, and number two, have answers about educational opportunities. That, that's what I took away from the, the last time. So, so, yeah. So I think we don't know what the timeframe will be. We hope it's November. If it is, great, but we can't rush. It has to be, if we decide to move forward, it has to be done. Nobody's perfect here. This, some of this is, we have a little bit of experience, but, you know, we, we don't have a lot, Si. So we need to make sure that we, we, we step cautiously and we, and we're in step, you know, right from the get-go or we're not. It's one or the other.
One last thing, sorry. And, and just, I think at the end of the day too, like, the next time we get together, I, I really want to start hearing some things from RIDE on this as well. Like, I, I really feel, you know, that, and I don't know how we do this as a, as a counselor or as a group, both councils here, but we need to get our questions in advance. You know, there are still going to be some outstanding questions here. We need to get those in front of RIDE and, and try to get some answers out of them, you know, in a very timely manner, which is January. So, I mean, that's, we're proposing getting together again, January 12th. Is that what I saw?
Yeah.
Yeah. So how, how do we do that as two bodies?
Oh, we just cut, we can cut that, contact Mario. He loves coming down, talking to us. Sorry.
If I could just make a recommendation.
Yes.
To Charlie's point, be specific about the questions. RIDE is, it's a large entity. And so Mario will be the ACE's expert on reimbursement for school construction. But there might be somebody different on school finances overall. There will certainly be somebody different on academics. I think another attribute of this we should think about jointly as a body and just be very realistic is that it is very likely that while the state will have certain answers on the formulaic possibilities around finances, when it comes to mapping out an education system for the future, we should be the tip of the spear in figuring out what the future of public education should look like in this entire state, not just on Aquinic Island. And that may require us looking beyond RIDE to get that answer.
Good point.
Okay. Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes. I, I'm still concerned about overwhelming the voters. It seems to me that, that if we give them too much information, we're overwhelming them. It seems to me that we, that, that we can sell the fact that financially there's going to be benefit. I think they would look at that and they would see that and they could vote on that, yes or no? Do I want to financially benefit or not? Yes or no? I think that would pass. And I think we have to think about what's going to happen at the polls. After that, then we can come together and put ideas together as to what could happen to make educational benefit for students. But to mix the two, it, it, it will polarize people. And I think we should do one thing at a time and then the other.
If I could, I actually fundamentally disagree with that. It's the first thing tonight I've heard someone disagree about. Once we make that decision, we are not relevant anymore. None of us are. There is a new governing body that is put in place that makes these decisions on everything from the football program to what our tax rates are going to be relative to supporting public education. And that's okay. I think that could be better. But we have to be realistic that what we're talking about here is creating a new system of government. And that goes much beyond just what the immediate financial benefits could be. We just have to be realistic about that.
I was not talking about the government. I was talking about what was happening in schools. When we talk about specifically improvements to education, that to me is, those are two different subjects. The, 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 the political aspect and the financial aspect and the management aspect, that's all one piece. But what happens in the schools, academics for kids, that's a totally different piece. And you know, it's not, it's one thing to talk about stuff, okay? It's quite another to implement it. And you just can't just come together with a bunch of ideas and, and all of a sudden it's going to roll out and just be wonderful. Doesn't work that way. Sometimes it just doesn't work. So you have to have a situation where people will put their ideas together of what they would like and then see what they actually can do. That requires time.
I just think we should be taking the time to make sure we get it right.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think, you know, you got to learn from your lessons. And, and again, don't rush. And where I think where we fell short was, and look, you're, you're probably the most experienced educator in the room, but where we fell short was, was, you know, at least the feedback we got was, hey, you didn't explain the educational benefits to, to, to the parents and what the, how the kids would benefit. So, hey, if, if I can have both, maybe that's a win. We had one. We didn't have the other. So I think we have to have both. And you're right. Sometimes no matter whether it's education or whatever business you're in, you can have all these ideas you want. You can throw all the money at it you want. Doesn't mean you're going to have the outcome that you want. That's why we got to get it right.
Any other conversation on the academic integration committee or?
So, so Charlie, I just want to make sure that we're, we're on the same page timeframe-wise. So there'll be one committee made up of folks from Newport, made up of folks from Middletown. I think, you know, one thing we've all learned about committees is that you get too many people on a committee and that committee needs a committee to be managed. So, and, and then in the outcomes, and the intent is good, right? And I say that just jokingly. The intent is always good, but you're not going to get to the, to, to the results or the timeframe of the, that you need if you have too many people on that. So I think there has to be a number in mind from, from both, from both communities.
But we have to have the, make, make sure we have, again, all the bases covered on that, on that committee. You know, we can't have just all educational people on that. I mean, you can have all financial people. So regardless of what the number is, with nine, seven, nine, 11, let's just make sure that there are, we have, you know, the, the basket that we want of, yeah, yeah, the balance that we want of who's on it. So, so there is representation, whether it's a former teacher or current teacher or a parent or, you know, somebody with, you know, more of the school finance background and things of that. Which I think, I believe that is listed in the resolution.
I'd just like to say, let's start with the people who are going to have the answers that we can get to this committee. And that's RIDE. There might be three different people. So we got to start finding out who those people are. And then start adding our committee, adding educational knowledge folks that probably our school committee to get, start thinking about what's in the school today and how, and then think outside the box.
Okay. So we need to come up, if we're going to move forward, we need to come up with some names and get some people on board. And then, you know, when, again, that won't be till February for us by the time with the, we got one more meeting and by the time we advertise and get those applications in and start appointing people, I just want to be realistic about the timeframe. So, you know, we don't have unreal expectations. Hey, you said you were going to do this, you didn't do it. What's up? You know?
As long as we have a timeframe.
What's that?
Yeah. As long as you know we have that timeframe and now.
Okay.
You can even do more to do, do it outside.
Okay. So I guess, is there any more conversation about that committee? No? Okay. You have anything? That's a, that's a three, that's our three favorite words, right? But not yet.
I know.
So, so we need to talk about the timeframe next, right?
Right. But I, I do want to, I do want to give a few minutes to the public for any questions because, you know, we do appreciate everyone showing up tonight. And I don't want to get into too, too long of a, of a discussion on that, but I just, I do want to open up this to maybe five people that the guys are, okay with that? And then we'll, and then we'll go to the next step.
Yeah.
Okay. That's true. So, um, let's see, I'll start with, no. All right. So we'll just call up, again, it's me, five people and then that's it. And you have three minutes to speak. So we'll start with this gentleman in the front right here. You want to, one, Joe, two, three. Who else want to go?
Thank you. My name's Antonio Viveras, 45 Bayview Park. I've been looking at regionalization for quite a while. And I just want to say that I do not know why Middletown Town Council is pushing for regionalization with Newport schools. Middletown has an excellent educational system ranking 20th in the state. Newport schools rank 49th in the state. Newport has many problems with cost overruns with the new Roger High, Rogers High School. A $98 million taxpayer approved bond ended with about 110 million in debt or about 14 to 23 million over budget, creating a $20 to $30 million deficit. They use proceeds, reserves and deferred other city projects. Rhode Island Department of Education, RIDE, provide a significant state aid. In a letter written by Middletown School Committee Chairman Gregory Hewitt, he wrote, "The Middletown School Committee voted unanimously not to support the City of Newport, Rhode Island Resolution of 13 August regarding the renewal initiative to pursue regionalization of the Middletown and Newport School Districts. As a, as the Chair of the Middletown School Committee, it is my responsibility along with the fellow school committee members to establish policies that create a safe and healthy learning environment for students, teachers and staff. An environment where students can attain academic success. The school committee must also enable the superintendent to focus solely on leading and encouraging our students, teachers and staff members in their pursuit of academic excellence. The superintendent is not authorized to engage in any regionalization effort until further notice. The Middletown School Committee has taken this unprecedented action with the intent to send a strong message to the Middletown Town Council and to inform the taxpayers as follows. Facing an undetermined, uncertain funding stream with daunting timelines and questionable outcomes with any significant unknown while knowing that approval would ultimately result in a loss of school committee autonomy is otherwise and has no support from the elected officials in the town of Middletown, signed the Middletown School Committee. Seeing how there is no commitment or pending Rhode Island legislation that guarantees an approximately 80% reimbursement rate."
Three minutes is up, sir. Sorry. Thank you.
It's five in Middletown. I think we maybe need to adopt three. I'm liking it. I'm liking it, Mr. Viveras. I'm liking it, Mr. Vavellis. Thank you, sir.
Um, I'm Joe Hearn. I feel like, uh, part of my CV should be listed. I'm a parent of two kids at Pell. I'm a PTO member, I'm a taxpayer in Newport, and I'm a, um, I'm a business owner, employer and taxpayer here in Middletown as well, the 55 people.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right.
And I care very much about both these communities also on that resume. I'm a Middletown soccer coach, like, and I'm an advocate for regionalization. I am also one of the parents, as this body knows, that knocked on hundreds of doors against the last regionalization measure, right? And I'm happy to have a conversation with anyone on this group, obviously this group knows where I am, on, on what our feelings were then and, um, why I still call myself, uh, an advocate for regionalization after doing all that. Um, lastly, I've also applied for this academic regionalization. I don't believe I'll have all the answers. My ambition to join that group is to have the right questions, right? To voice the concerns of a parent who's expecting to be in this healthy discourse and disagreement for the next 15 years on behalf of my kids and to actually help plan for a educational future that kind of suits just not my kids, but all the kids on the island. I fundamentally believe that neither one of these communities should go it alone on education as we go forward. I see labor changing, I see communities changing, and I know education's going to change. Like, it's in our headlines all the time. We're getting fed tons of misinformation about what the future looks like, but there is no question, um, that the way we approach education right now can survive, will survive, will match the needs of companies like mine in the technology space, um, in the years to come, right? So, uh, I think that we need to be planning for a future-focused, uh, uh, community education program, a regionalization that addresses not where we were, not the many gripes or disappointments that we've had getting to this point, but the opportunities that we see in front of us. I will tell you, actually having a conversation with both of these communities and aligning on what that future looks like means more to me than the conversation about, about the dollars. I understand, I'm a business owner, I'm realistic, I know we have expenses, I know we have people, I know we need to be able to afford the right people, but, um, it has to start with the kids, it has to start with the education, and I desperately don't want to knock on 200 more doors, right? I'm easy to find, uh, my company's advanced remarketing, if any of the counselors are interested in my opinion on this. I'm, I'm happy to make that time and myself available. Thank you to the Newport, thank you to Middletown. I'm as optimistic as I need to be on this. I, I, not in a rush, I just want to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm with that guy.
I'm Alana Hearn, um, his wife, also have two daughters at Pell. Um, just a couple of things, I'll be quick. Um, I think it's interesting that Bristol Warren were used as an example tonight because their relationship has been contentious with ongoing legal battles between both communities ever since they regionalized. So I think it's really important that we learn from them and their mistakes going forward. I think not rushing is incredibly important. Um, I think that many of us are hopeful that this is the beginning of fully regionalizing, um, that we're afraid that if it stalls out at just combining administrations, that we end up two communities fighting over resources. So I think we can agree that increasing student enrollment in AP classes is a great benefit, but we don't get that benefit unless we combine the student bodies. So I think it's necessary that we go back to answering Counselor Pennix's question before we end up at the ballots, which is, is this the first step in fully regionalizing or is it the only step? I think the constituents are going to need that answer and commitment from the counselors before we go to the polls. Thank you.
Don Moran, 549 Turner Road in Middletown. Um, I want to premise my comments as I am a pro-regionalization. Um, I've been in Middletown for five years. Prior to that, I spent 27 years in Mendon, Massachusetts, part of a regional school district. We were, I was actually, I had the opportunity to spend time on the regional school committee. I didn't spend as much time as Mrs. Van Vellis, but I've had a little bit of experience at regional school districts. And they do provide economies of scale and bring benefits to the education. My concern is the timeline. Um, I know the money is driving the timeline and I'm concerned about not doing enough about the educational benefits in the future in this timeline. But, um, you know, there's four other regional school districts in Rhode Island, there are plenty in Massachusetts. And Massachusetts actually does a very fine job. They have a Massachusetts Association of Regional School Committees, which provided us lots of guidance when we were, when I was in, on the school committee in Massachusetts. There are a lot of opportunities out there to help us through this process. And governance is the most important thing. I, I'm, I'm actually not a fan of the way the current governance is set up. When I was in a regional school district, it was even. We actually had an even number of people on the school committee to force us to work together and break any log jams. We had three in each town. I know in the large, I think of our choose a regional school committee that Mrs. Von Gillis spent time in, there are five or six towns and they all have four reps or three reps or something. They're all equally represented regardless of population. I know that's not done that way in Bristol Warren. I know it's not done in most of the Rhode Island, um, um, regional school districts, but I would firmly recommend you revisit that governance. Um, the school committee can certainly handle the finances as part of a subcommittee as well. It's something to consider because we need to get that right. But I really think we need to take the time to do that part correctly by using the, the, you know, the examples that are out there already. And whether the consultant that you have considering has that experience or not, I, I'm not sure. Um, and, and speaking from Mendon, we didn't stop there. We regionalized our public safety dispatch. We joined five other communities and saved mil-, you know, million dollars a year in regional public safety dispatch by regionalizing that. We shouldn't stop with education. We really need to regionalize these small districts, you know, three public safety dispatches on the island. I'm getting off topic now, but I think it's something we need to consider working more closely with across the entire island. But we, and I just want to close with, you know, the, the kids really deserve the better education. We need to make sure that is first and foremost. I know we're driven by this deadline for the, but, you know, the finance piece, but we have to answer those educational questions. If we can do it in 90 days, great, because then we can have that in time before.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more coming up.
Good evening. Teresa Spengler, Middletown. I just have a couple of questions, a little bit of confusion. In regards to the committee, it was, Paul, you had actually asked the question of what would the role be of the members? And that, that question was never answered, so I'm in hopes that maybe in the 12th would be able to get more clarification on that. Also, has the committee looked at, um, how other Rhode Island? I know somebody mentioned Bristol Warren, Charahoe, some of those other districts in Rhode Island versus Massachusetts, because Massachusetts, we really can't compare. Their educational system is very different. They have pay-to-play programs, their funding is different. So I think we just need to focus on the Rhode Island districts of, of how are they working together? How was it, how were their, um, how was their organization and their, um, school committee functioning? How does that work? God, I feel a little short next. So that's something, those are just questions that I had. Also, another question was, though, we have not had any commitment from legislation yet in regards to how much the reimbursement would be. There is some talk out there of 2% per grade, there's some talk 80%, but only if you actually qualify. So those numbers are not solidified at all, um, for reimbursement. So I think that's something that the public really has questions on and would like to know more about. I'm sorry, I apologize, I have a lot of notes. The other thing that we are, I, I have a question as we are focusing on admin for regionalization, isn't that what the resolution specifies? Not the whole district at this time? So I think that that needs to be looked at too, of one superintendent, is that really cost-effective? Can one superintendent do it without having assistants and so on and so forth and other staff? In regards to finance, Middletown already is consolidated with the town, so we, you know, that's something that we're already deeply engrossed in with our facilities as well. So these are things that have to be important. If we did consolidate, I mean, if we did regionalize as, as two communities, we also have to look at unions, how those things would work. You know, is it, is it really appropriate to plan just for regionalization of administration now and kind of wing it? Or, or look at the whole picture all at the same time? Not just do administration, then suddenly in five years, oh, by the way, let's do it this way. I think it needs to have, the communities deserve a really specific plan of what the goals and objectives are of the two, of the city council and town council. So personally, I still feel, and I've been an educator for 31 years, and yes, I'm on school committee for tw- for 23, one more year left. Um, I've been a big part of building the, the, our, um, new school system and, um, you know, I'm not going to discuss personally my opinion on the resolution of what we signed because I can't speak for anybody else. That's not my, my place. I'm speaking as a Middletown resident and a taxpayer, a business owner, a parent of two children who went through the public schools. And as I said, I'm an educator for 31 years. So I still have some confusion of what happened tonight. I feel like there's a lot of unanswered questions.
So, thank you so much.
We need more on that.
Appreciate it, yep.
Need the dollars and the cents for the, uh, Ride.
Yeah. So, can I just answer a couple of questions really quick?
Go ahead.
So, back from this again, this Woolport report, and this was back in 2022. The School Regionalization Act House Bill 8267 Substitute Day, the act was passed by the Rhode Island Senate and House in June of 2022. The act gives the municipalities the authority to create a combined regional school district. And again, this was in 2022. So long as the voters from both communities approve the idea in the general election of November 8th, 2022. The act outlines governance administrative functions for the new regionalized school district, goes on to say, highlights, Teresa, to answer one of your questions, was regionally, regionalization will allow 80% reimbursement for any bonds issued between January 1st, 2022, and June 30th, 2026. And I think that 2% has, it did not pass, but that 2%, Sean, I think we, we, you, you've got it, we went from 35% to 37 and a half percent. So, I don't know. I don't know.
So, so each community has a base reimbursement of 35%. Uh, there's the 20% bonus, uh, that's, that's, that statute. And then it's 2% for each grade that's regionalized. So it's, it's very clear in the Rhode Island statutes that those bonuses exist.
Yeah, I don't think that percentage changes.
No.
Is my point.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Query, i- if it is fixed law, why did the legislation in 2022 specifically spell out the reimbursement rates?
I think at that time, we were concerned, um, the city and town that, uh, there was an emphasis that we were actually going to receive that money, I think, uh, because it was a, I, I think that was it. I think it was more of a belt and suspenders, um, type of language that we proposed. I, I think with both the city and town going into the deal, wanting to ensure that we would see that 80-plus percent, uh, reimbursement. And Chris might want to add something from Newport's side, but I believe that was really what we did at the time.
Yes, uh, and thank, is it on? Yeah, Sean and I were, we met over coffee to kind of discuss this, this kind of see why the legislation initially had that. And the conclusion we came to is that, uh, it was largely to, to affirm a minimum for Middletown, because you know, you'll notice in the previous legislation, Middletown was mentioned specifically, Newport was not. But, uh, speaking with, with the Rhode Island Department of Education, those numbers are set. It's 35 base share, 26% for regionalization bonus, that's 2% per grade, as has been mentioned. That other 20% is based on, uh, building security and safety initiatives. Those are incentives that are in 5% increments. So, but that has nothing to do with the regionalization bonus. So Middletown and Newport might receive 5, 10, 15 or 20, uh, but that has nothing to do with the regional, regionalization. That, that 26%, that delta that was talked about earlier, that is fixed for both communities in the event that the community is regional.
So I just, before we wrap up, I just want to plant a seed in your, in your heads just for something to think about. And again, this is just me thinking out loud and who knows whether we, what happens or not, but I think one of the things we need to consider is that with a, with a potential regional school district, I want you to think about, consider giving them taxing authority. So there's a level of accountability for spending. I want you to think about that, whether it happens or not, or it's possible, I don't know. But I've been thinking about this and talking to a couple of people about it, that, because I think some of the concern is, well, you know, you kind of lose control of your, of, they can say, hey, we need 4% and that's what you're going to give us. Newport, you write a check, and Middletown, you write a check. Well, if you have, you're held accountable for that, then it's a diff- sometimes, not, not that it would change, but sometimes it's a different story. And I think that's something that needs to be considered.
Great, it's a great point. So do we want to, uh, agree to?
I'm in.
If anyone that's not in, raise your hand.
Anybody, as a council, if you guys want to move forward with the January 12th meeting? Okay.
We want to huddle up?
So, so I just want to be clear on the expectations for that meeting. What are, what are we expecting to come back with? Just a continued conversation, where we're at? I mean, I want to make sure that.
Um, I would.
We come to the table.
Yeah, I would like to get the school committees.
Okay.
And, uh, some, uh, folks from Ride, so we can, uh, get, start getting answered to some of the questions that have come up like tonight and.
Okay.
Uh, Council Pennix has a question. By the 12th, will you have started, um, the process of getting, uh, members of our reintegration?
Yeah, so we have to, we have to, we have to pass a resolution first, Ellen, and then once we do that, um, you know, we're still talking February by the time we start receiving applications, but that would be the next step. I'll put that on the docket for the next meeting. Yep.
All right. So, uh, before we adjourn, I just want to, um, thank the folks here at, uh, Johnny's Atlantic Resort for hosting us tonight, so this is as neutral site as we can possibly get and, um, and thank you guys all for coming out.
Charlie, did you just say this is a neutral site for you?
Not for us. For us.
Yeah. Hey, guys, thank you very much. Again, we appreciate it and, uh, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.